Nursing home, convalescent home, rest home and home for the aged. And site plan review for a 25-bed assisted living facility in the neighborhood community zone at 116/126/127/137 Village Terrace, Woodland Park lots 3 through 6, The Village. Laura, did you want to make us short? We're going to start with the applicant first. Do you want to brief anything?
No, I don't want to brief anything and the applicant is just ready to go.
Name, rank, serial number.
There we go. So my name is Eric Smith and so I wear a couple of different hats with Matrix Design Group. Address 2435 Research Parkway, Cower Springs, Colorado. I'm also the property owner and have been working with RTB Development and the group as they have moved forward with the existing building that's out there today and of course, the second phase of the project which we're going to discuss this evening. Here as well, and I'd like to introduce Ron Whitner. Ron is the principal owner and developer of the project and I'd like him to step up and tell you what's going on and a little bit about himself.
Yes, my name is Ron Whitner and I live at 17632, excuse me, Lakeside Drive, I think I was in the [inaudible], Lakeside Drive in Monument, Colorado. So I think when we were here before, I was in a slightly different position as just the developer partner in this project where we were, in that situation, we were having owners, operators rather, that were going to eventually purchase the properties from us. Since then, after 37 years in the corporate world, in last June, I had the opportunity to take a buyout from Fidelity Investments, which we did, and am now full-time in a company called Elements of Living and we are the owners and operators of this residence. It's been a very exciting project. Had a little bit of fits and starts getting us, getting going, getting the project open, but we expect to get our CO in the next few days and get residents in there in just, you know, in a week or two. So we're very excited about the opportunity that we have here and the building, Ellen I know has come by, has had Laura, and certainly are anxious to show the residents off to each of you and to the entire community. It's a beautiful place, in a beautiful city, on a beautiful site, it's just unbelievable. And we think we're going to have just an unbelievable offering for Teller County. We are the only assisted living residents in Teller County. And just to distinguish, to make sure you understand, I'm sure you all are well-versed, but there is assisted living where we do not provide any medical care. So I know in the conditional use permit, it uses all those words, but we are not in nursing or medical facility. We are in assisted living residence. The skilled care happens at Forest Ridge, so if somebody needed additional care beyond what we can provide and just the assistance and support, they could transfer to a facility like Forest Ridge. We are, just have been overwhelmed. One of our big concerns frankly was where are we going to get the employees? And we have had, that has been one of the bright spots in the enterprises we've gone forward. We've had a lot of applications and have hired presently about 18, but we will eventually, no, we've hired over 20, but will eventually hire about 23 employees. All of them are local. Our manager is Dave Durfee. He moved here about a year ago, but he's a local resident. Diane Evergreen is a long-term Woodland Park resident and she is our activities coordinator. Dave is going to be our manager of the facility with extensive experience coming from the west coast. So we're excited about it and we want to, we think the opportunity is going to be greater than just the one residence that we have. It's a 21-room, 21-unit. We could have, we're licensed to 24 residents now, but we think we're going to have additional demand beyond that. So we're very excited to have the opportunity to use that beautiful site so that we can cite that next residence in a similar fashion with those beautiful views of Woodland Park.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. So I'll kind of step through this quickly. I guess in summary, the reason why we're here this evening is we're looking to relocate Building 2, which was originally planned for lots 3 and 4 to lots 5 and 6, and then lots 3 and 4 will become an amenitized area and I've got a map here that I can show you that in a minute. But in general, a conditional use permit was approved for this in October 2015 and so we're coming tonight to amend that for the movement of Building 2. So the building or the site is located just across from Walmart. As part of the first phase of the project, a significant infrastructure improvement was made to extend sewer across the highway and that was quite a process with the bore and pretty costly. But anyway, there was a lot that had to come together including, and I'll give some props to Walmart here. Walmart worked really well with us to help make that happen because that was their property. And so I'll give kudos to Walmart as a great participant of economic development here in Woodland Park. So as Ron had mentioned, the program, it's assisted living, I don't believe, maybe there's not memory care. All right. Some of this is a holdover from my last presentation, which was three years ago, so excuse me and I'll update it for City Council. 24 beds, not 25, based on what Ron just said. There were some concerns the last go-around about, you know, medical and biohazard waste and those types of things. Of course, that'll be dealt with per the state requirements. Meal preparation will be done on-site. There was a lot of discussion on that last time. There is a small kitchen that they cook the meals. It's not an industrial kitchen, it's not a commercial kitchen. Yep, sorry, I'm going to let Ron answer.
So state regulations have changed for assisted living residences, even this year. They've just come out with new regulations and new rules. So any residence, any assisted living residence with over 17 residents or beds that are licensed, you do have to have a commercial kitchen or you do have to meet the restaurant regulations with the state of Colorado. So we do have a commercial kitchen. It does have a commercial exhaust hood, but we do not have a deep fryer. It's just a commercial range enough. So we're not expecting to do anything that you wouldn't do in your home, but it has to be done in a commercial fire.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, the cup was originally approved in 2015, two phases, two buildings. Building 1 is completed. In fact, the CO, as Ron said, any day now, so that's exciting. Hopefully with the first residents moving in the next 30 days. Phase 2 of the development is moving from lots 3 and 4 to lots 5 and 6 and then, as I mentioned, the open space amenity area will happen on lots 3 and 4. Ron mentioned some of the economic impact, 21 new jobs.
We have 16 caregivers. There will be 16 caregivers, two shifts of eight. We have three days, three evenings, two overnight, and then we'll have five on culinary staff. Additionally, we'll have a manager, a housekeeper, and Diane Evergreen who's our activities and social worker.
So a great economic job generator here in Woodland Park. So as I mentioned, here's this graphic. So this is Building 1. Building 2 was slated for this location. That is being slid to what I call, you know, what is currently lots 5 and 6. One of the conditions of record is to vacate the lot line between lots 5 and 6, which we will do through a separate process. Lots 3 and 4, where Building 2 was originally planned for, will become an amenitized area with some walking trails and picnic area, another fire pit and such. So as was noted, it's currently zone neighborhood commercial, hence why we're coming in requesting for the cup to be amended. The total acreage is about 2.4 acres. I think one of the interesting statistics is that the open space, and this is on the second building, lots 3 through 6, is 67.5%. So I did not do a calculation for the entire six lots, but if I had to guess, we're probably at 50% or better, open space to development, probably well in excess of 50% for open space. So I think that is a real great thing about this development as it's proposed. There will never be any buildings that'll occur on lots 3 and 4 with this plan in place. So instead of having multiple buildings on six lots, we're going to have two buildings on six lots. We're actually adding some parking. So originally, we had 20 spaces. Nine spaces are required per building. Not a lot of these folks drive cars. So we met the parking standards before, but because we moved the building over, of course, we had to provide parking in front of that building and then we went ahead and built out the additional parking in front of Building 1. So now we have a total of 31 spaces for both buildings, 21 new spaces, nine are required. So we're well overparked, plus there's parking availability if needed on Village Terrace as well. Village Terrace is a private roadway. It was a city roadway and we vacated the right of way with Building 1 based on, for setback reasons and whatnot, so it is now a private road. So it's maintained by the property owners. So from a landscaping perspective, I think that they've done a great job of landscaping for Building 1. Obviously landscaping is very important when you're trying to sell this type of facility to residents, the professional look and feel and, but the homey feel. So that landscaping will carry over into Building 2 and of course, there'll be a lot of landscaping into that amenitized area as well. Replacing some of the trees that were cut down, obviously there's some additional trees that we're going to take down, but replacing that, doing some really nice landscaping. The building, which I'll get to in a minute, from an architectural perspective, I think fits the character of Woodland Park really well. So basically, the architecture is going to be almost identical of what's out there today. And so, you know, the stone and stucco, the dimensional shingles, the building height's about 25 feet, give or take. It does fit the character, fits that area, fits, you know, what we see in most from a residential perspective in Woodland Park. There are many examples that are very similar. You know, essentially, this is a 12,000 square foot building. You know, there are homes in Woodland Park in some places that, you know, are that size or close to it. So this is kind of a large home placed on a piece of property and it's made to feel that way, obviously. This is the fire pit that was built for Building 1. So I'll just go through these very quickly. The traffic study that was approved by both the city and CDOT in 2015 didn't change. So we're not adding any new beds, we're not adding anything more than what we currently have approved in the current cup. So there are no changes. All the auxiliary lanes were built back in 2005. So from a traffic study perspective, we're, there are no other impacts. In fact, originally, the site called for 797 new trips and that's because it's zone neighborhood commercial, commercial uses. The total number of trips that we'll have on a weekday basis for both buildings is 134. So quite a, quite a reduction. From a drainage perspective, there's a drainage system that was built in 2005 to serve the entire lots 1 through 8, which includes the BSI building that's there today, the existing Building 1, and then the future development on the other lots. We submitted a drainage report to the city. We've received a comment, we're working through those comments to address them and we will get through that here in the next few weeks and get that drainage report completed. And then from a view shed perspective, so the residents that sit up on top of the hill, this will sit so much lower, you know, 30 feet lower, that, you know, the residents up there will look right over these buildings. So there'll be no blockage to Pike's Peak or to the ridge line at all. They'll look right over the top of the buildings just as they do the landscape today. All the lighting will be full cutoff. There are no parking lot lights, so there's lights on the buildings and a few landscape type lights are all full cutoff. Of course, we need the building setbacks. Emergency vehicles, that was a big discussion item last time and, you know, so they have protocols in place so that 2:00 in the morning, the ambulance isn't screaming in there with the lights on and the sirens on. That doesn't need to happen. So they'll come in, the lights may be on, but the sirens won't be on at 2:00 in the morning to disturb the neighbors. And from a property valuation perspective, you know, property values are going up. I think we all recognize that. And so the building of, the first building and the use that's been in process now for the last, well, it's been planned for the last three years and now is currently built, hasn't affected the property values in the adjacent area at all. In fact, property values have continued to go up. So in summary, we're asking for the conditional use permit to be amended so that we can move Building 2 to lots 5 and 6 and then lots 3 and 4 will become an open space amenitized area for the residents. We agree with staff that all 11 of the conditional use requirements and criteria have been met and have been complied with. We agree with all the conditions set forth in the staff report and we request that you approve and recommend the City Council approval for 18-002 for the cup and the site plan review of 18-002. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. And thank you.
Questions?
I have one. One question. 5 and 6, the lot line, vacate between 1 and 2. I assume it does work with the building across those lots. 3 and 4 still separate lots where they're going together? Any conditional on that?
So our intent is to vacate between lots 5 and 6 and create one lot and between 4 and 5. So essentially, when we're all said and done, there'll be two lots. Think of it that way. So what used to be lots 1, 2 and 3 will now be one lot and what used to be lots 4, 5 and 6 will be lot 2. And the reason for that is to have them separate, then they could sell one or the other if they decided that they wanted to sell one of the, one of the buildings.
But the conditional use, we don't surprise, ask, to both buildings, all six lots of residents.
The original conditional use permit for lots 1 to 4 will still apply and then we're going to amend the conditional use permit on lots 3 and 4 with this conditional use. So yes, 1 through 6 will have a conditional use permit on it to allow for the use and the site plans as drawn and written and approved will apply through 1 through 6.
So we have a note on the drawing that says, "All interior lot lines and associated five-foot utility easements for lots 4 through 6 to be vacated under separate document." So that would include the lot line between 4 and 5 and the lot line between 5 and 6. No, it's a good question.
Eric, you got a question? You said that Village Terrace was a public street and it's going to be vacated and you will be responsible for it?
It has been vacated already.
Then who's going to take care of the plumbing for the people that come into the other building?
Who's going to take care of what?
There's an entrance there to the other building, to the other people, and that's your property.
We have a maintenance agreement that's in place.
So you'll take care of that lot so it doesn't, going from public to private, you've got a maintenance agreement with that third building down there.
That entire roadway is private.
Just wanted to ask.
Yep. And BSI, they were the owners of the building at the time and of course, still are. And that was, you know, they, they agreed to that at that time as well.
One question that I have is based on the drawing, some kind of, since it's a commercial building, are there going to be sidewalks? I would really like to go for walks and move around and with this picture, I know it's in the process of being built, that there is only one small sidewalk, is there going to be sidewalks required?
So the first, so sidewalks are required along public streets and so the public street is Glendale and fees in lieu of sidewalk were paid and that was the decision that was made because there's no other sidewalk, you know, along Glendale. Plus there's a drainage ditch, it's a, you know, it'd be very difficult to get a sidewalk in there, you know, and then dealing with grades and whatnot. So we have sidewalk that connects the two buildings together and that is what goes through the amenitized area and then access outside the development would be via the road, which is not unlike most residential subdivisions that we have in the community. So.
And then one other question I have is why the switch from lots 3 and 4 to now going to 5 and 6, so we can understand?
So when we came forward with lots 3 and 4 and if we brought the original plans out, which I don't have with me, or maybe I do, but, you know, the way, if you go out there today and you see the slope and, you know, we had a retaining wall that was 25 feet tall in the back and it really was kind of shoved in there to try to make it fit. And the idea was, well, we've got one parking lot, we'll put our two buildings and that kind of makes sense. After they, you know, started their construction and thought through their bigger vision, you know, they said, hey, we'd really like to have an area where we can have, you know, an open space amenity area, you know, it'd make more sense if we moved Building 2 to lots 5 and 6, put that on lots 3 and 4. The other piece of it is the views off the back of the building to Pike's Peak and the ridge are spectacular. And so turning the building and basically mirroring the existing building that's there to the other side of the street provides that nice anchor with the amenitized area at the end of the cul-de-sac and of course, they get the views that, you know, we all moved here for. So hopefully that answers your question. We just, we just think it's a better design. I mean, I really do. I think it's a better design. You know, I own the, I owned all the lots. Under the old, under the current cup, if they were to build Building 2, I'd still own lots 5 and 6 and presumably, I could come in with a commercial office building that is a permitted use and, you know, build a third building there. I think this is a better use. It would be more economically beneficial to me if I were to build a third building, but I don't think that that's what's best for the property. I think that, you know, this type of development, the density that's being proposed and that amenity, open space, really makes this property great. And so I, when they approached me, I thought it made all the sense in the world.
Is it possible, I've got a question for Sally. If they, we do approve lots 5 and 6 being used for the second building, is there any way with the conditional use that they cannot, even if sold, develop lots 3 and 4? Put that in there as a conditional?
I'm going to take a shot. So when we vacate the lot lines, there'll be one lot, one building. So the, they, there would be no way, and plus I'm wrong, there'd be no way to come in and ask for a second building because there's not a second lot.
Correct. Come back and re-subdivide that and put another building on there?
It's not even a subdivision application, it's just an interior lot line vacation, a $40 application.
But you're correct, in the future, somebody could come in and re-subdivide, but that could happen on any piece of property. You know, somebody could come in on any piece of property, say, hey, I want to re-subdivide this, scrape off what's there, but that's why there's a process that, you know, you go through with planning commission, city council, city staff.
And Commissioner Good, I would just like to clarify for the record, a total of $128,801 were the development fees that were applied with the first phase, with the first building construction. And a lot of those fees, the stormwater capital fee, the transportation capital fee, the sidewalk curb and gutter fee, the park capital fee, the water and wastewater tap fees, and the regional park fees, only applied to Building 1, 1A. So 3 and 4 will have fees associated, as will 5 and 6 with the next development.
Building 2.
Building 2.
Yes.
With Building 2 development.
Yeah, so Building 2 will have similar fees.
Questions? I have one. They don't? It's kind of like a campus, what you're doing there. Now, in that, what, perhaps he'd be better to answer this. Who qualifies for assisted living? What's the kind of patron tenant that you're going to have? Who typically would come into that?
Sure, someone that's, rough rule of thumb, 70% independent, but there is a need for some oversight, whether that's needing housekeeping, laundry, cooking, those kinds of services or medication management. So the staff that we have are qualified medication administration professionals. So that's really their only qualification from a medical standpoint. They're not, they're not providing medical care, but we do provide medication administration. So if you're looking for folks, so visiting angels, they're taking care of folks in their homes, but once it becomes infeasible that you can even stay in your home and you can't have somebody there 24 hours a day, then you would move into assisted living. We cannot provide any medical care. So if you're requiring nursing care on an ongoing basis, we can, you can come in, you can have nurses come into our residence, but you cannot have 24-hour nursing care. We do not provide nursing care, so it's not a nursing home. That's it? Answer the question?
No, no, I understand. So if somebody needs nursing care through the, either visiting nurses or whatever, they can come into the facility?
Sure.
It's not for that, it's not for that person that is, needs constant medical care?
That's Forest Ridge.
Okay.
Forest Ridge is a skilled nursing facility as well as rehab and memory care.
Okay. Very good.
John, I, Ron, I have a question. Can you share with us how many rooms are already spoken for?
Yeah, we don't have anyone signed up. We've had a bit of a sliding opening date and so we've had some folks that are extremely interested and we still have folks that are extremely interested, but because we've had this sliding opening date, they wanted to tell them, they want to see the CO before, you know, they're ready to sign the dotted line. One of the processes, and this is a little bit inside baseball, but according to the state of Colorado, we have to have two residents in the residence prior to us getting our full licensing. So they'll come out and do an inspection with two residents. So we have to get two residents in, wait for the state to come out and then we can open up to additional residents.
One question that I have concerning your kitchen, it's a, you know, not quite a commercial kitchen. Are you going to be required to have a grease trap?
No.
And I think you said that there are no microwaves in use in each room.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, the state does not allow cooking in assisted living residence rooms. So we certainly don't, we are for that because we don't have the popcorn.
How do they get popcorn if they want to watch TV?
What's that?
How do they get popcorn?
We are there, we have.
You do that for them, you provide them.
Absolutely. We provide, we have one staff person for eight people, so they're going to be.
Gotcha.
Well taken care of.
Okay. Thank you.
John's checking it out. 50 years from now, he'll be right.
It has some attraction to it. Okay, thank you. Laura, would you like to be up next?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me just grab them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the planning commission meeting of August 23, 2018. We are here today to talk about the conditional use permit and the site plan review for the Woodland Park assisted living facility. The use is proposed as 18-09-09-0J3, which is a nursing home, convalescent home, rest home and home for the ages, or something very similar, in this case, an assisted living residence. It is phase 2 of a two-building, 50-bed assisted living facility. What I've done is I've just outlined some of the processes has already gone through in terms of the first phase. So you'll remember back in September of 2015, September 16 of 2015, phase 1 began with a phase one began with a community meeting that started the whole process off. And then, it went to city council for public hearing on November 5 of 2015. And that's where it was approved as a 50-bed, 50-unit assisted living facility. And then, on phase two, we are here today for the planning commission public hearing. And city council public hearing has been scheduled for September 20 of 2018. So, as, as Mr. Smith has stated previously on his presentation, the site is located here opposite Walmart at the southern end of the city, just off of Highway 24, located on Village Terrace. This is a close-up from Google Earth showing the site. This is all six lots labeled one through six here. One and two have been merged into one lot, lot 1A, which now contains the building that is a week away from a CO. And we are in the process of getting that CO finalized for the applicant. Two and three, or three and four is where the applicant is proposing to have the amenitized space, the open space for the residents of both buildings. And five and six here, these two lots will become one lot. Actually, let me rephrase that. The new building that they're proposing, the second building, is moving from three and four to five and six. And then, what the applicant is proposing is four, five, and six will be one lot. One, two, and three will be another lot. This is the BSI building, which is a yeast production facility for beer. And this also shows you, here's the Walmart, Highway 24, and the vacant land south of the Walmart. Some of the vacant neighborhood commercial land south of BSI, and then the residences that surround it. This is a zoning map showing the site. Here, these are lots three, four, five, and six in the red circle. One and two are just below. BSI building is just here to the west of Village Terrace. Village Terrace is this private road that comes up into a cul-de-sac, servicing these seven lots in this subdivision. So, the neighborhood commercial is shown in this light pink, and it is surrounded to the east and north and south by suburban residential, which is a residential zone district. And then, opposite the highway is the Walmart PUD. And this is the boundary for the city and Teller County. So, everything in white here is Teller County. These are photos of the existing site. Again, this is as you're approaching from Glendale into the entrance of Village Terrace right here, looking at the south face of building one. This is the north face of building one. And this shows you the area that will be proposed, that is being proposed as the fire pit, picnic areas, little walking trails, and open space that will be common for both buildings. And this is the site for lot five and six, which shows you a lot of the tree area that exists right now. And this is the end of the cul-de-sac. So, this is from phase one. This is a map that shows where the two buildings were proposed and approved with the original conditional use permit in 2015. So, this is the first building that is under construction and ready and scheduled for their final CO. And again, this is where the building number two was proposed to go on lots three and four. And there was no plan in the CUP, the original CUP did not include lots five and six. And so, what the applicant is doing right now is amending the CUP to include lots five and six so that a nursing home assisted living facility can occur on those two lots, as well as lots one through four. So, this was phase one as approved. And this is phase two with the amended conditional use permit. So, the Aspen already exists, and this is where they're proposing the second building, essentially the same footprint as the first building. Here, you see the open spaces. And as mentioned before, lot 1A is the combination of lots one and two. And the applicant is proposing to remove the lot line between 1A and lot three, so that this is one lot. And then, four, five, and six will be one lot as well. And I would imagine that there would be some sort of an agreement for the use of the common area between the two buildings. But that is a private agreement. And this is, again, the elevation, similar to what you saw for the first phase in 2015. I believe that the garage and this connection is not actually being built. It wasn't built for the first phase. And I don't believe that you have space to build it in the second building. So, that left portion of the elevation is not going to be built.
Small correction. The extension to the garage is built, but the garage is sold.
Oh, so this portion is built?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, just this two-door garage, I guess, was never built. And, and I guess that extension is also proposed for the new building. Okay. So, staff did a complete review and analysis of this conditional use permit and site plan review application. We did send a referral out to the Woodland Park departments, the utilities department, the public works department, police, the building department, Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, IRA, Black Hills, Baja, CDOT, and Century Link. And all of the application referrals, all the referral responses we received back with comments have been addressed by the applicant or are conditions of the approval of this conditional use permit. Public notice, everyone within 150 feet of the site was sent a letter notifying them of tonight's meeting and of the planning commission public hearing as well. Posters have been posted on lots five and six. And we did a publication in the Courier for tonight's public hearing. So, as Mr. Smith mentioned, the zone district that we are in is the neighborhood commercial zone district. This is a very brief outline of the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone district. And generally, it's for retail, personal service, and office establishments and other commercial, commercial uses. And then, as a conditional use, we can allow for what we're calling the nursing home use, the assisted living facility. And that's why we're here tonight, because it's a conditional use to have this. Neighborhood commercial is primarily a commercial zone with that intent. So, the neighborhood commercial zone district has certain limitations. The height is a maximum of 35 feet. The applicant complies with the proposal as presented. There are front and rear yards of 25 feet and a side setback of 8 feet or 15 feet next to the suburban residential zone. The applicant complies with those setbacks. There's a minimum frontage of 40 feet. The applicant does comply with that. The applicant complies with all of the parking requirements for this use pursuant to Section 1839 of the municipal code. The applicant complies with all the landscaping. No fencing is proposed at this point. They did build the fence to the north of lot four for that edge voluntarily. And then, signs are through a separate sign permit. Again, sidewalk, we had mentioned before that they are going to be fees in lieu. There is an additional portion of the right-of-way on lot six that abuts Highway 24, which we will, we will add to the calculation for the sidewalk requirement and the curb and gutter requirements. And then, the landscaping complies with all of our requirements in terms of what they're proposing for the landscaping and the open space. There are 11 standards that the applicant addressed and that need to be addressed as far as the city's conditional use permit standards. There is a demonstrated need for this facility and the expansion thereof. There is no negative impact to the health and welfare of the city or the residents of the city. Or, nor is there any negative impact to property values. Staff believes the application as proposed and as amended does harmonize with the neighborhood and with the commercial zone and with the surrounding neighborhood residences. Staff believes the proposal complies with the city plans, including the 2010 comprehensive plan, that it complies with the city regulations, and will comply with the regulations when it comes in for its building permit. The traffic study hasn't changed, and it was approved previously and has not changed for this new amendment. We are working with the applicant on the drainage report. And our condition is that before we will sign off on any approved site plan review or conditional use permit, that the applicant get an approved drainage plan through the city. So, the drainage is the only really truly outstanding issue, and it is not an obstacle in that it cannot be worked out. Staff believes it complies with all the water, sewer, and wastewater connections, services available and adequate for the proposal, that there are no hazards, and that all hazards, if there are any, can be mitigated, and that the architectural design is aesthetically pleasing and in compliance with what you see in that neighborhood. There are also site plan review standards, which you'll see are very similar to the conditional use permit standards. Again, it complies with the city plans and the city regulations. It complies with the mitigation for traffic impact. They've been, there's been consideration for the topography of the site, the soils, the drainage, environmental hazards and features, connection and service through wastewater, water, sewer, air quality, no impact. And then, consideration for fire and safety hazards and compatibility of both the use and the building on this particular site. Staff does believe that it complies with all of the conditional use permit standards and the site plan review standards in the municipal code, and does recommend approval of the conditional use permit, CUP number 18-002, and site plan review number 18-002 for phase two of the Woodland Park assisted living facility, currently addressed as 116, 126, 127, and on 137 of Village Terrace. And includes lots three through six of the village, subject to the following conditions. There are five conditions, and I'll just briefly go through them for the record. Signage, number one, signage is to be approved under a separate sign permit. And I'm not sure that they're even proposing any signs for the second building, but that would be through a separate sign permit if they are. The applicant shall submit four sets of the final site plan for planning department approval with any, with any changes that are discussed tonight or proposed. Staff does not have any proposed changes except what you see, number three. At any rate, the applicant has to submit those changes. And this is the condition, second sentence of number two, that states the site plan shall not be executed by the city until the drainage report has been approved by the public works department. Number three, amend sheet seven to remove the garage portion and any other portion of the building that is not proposed for construction, or just cross it off so that we know that it's not part of the proposal. And then, condition number four deals with the zoning development permit and the grading permit that's required prior to any issuance of a building permit. So, with that zoning development permit and grading permit, we require a final stamped utility and grading plan, a final stamped drainage report, final stamped landscape plan, and final architectural elevations with materials and colors proposed. And finally, condition number five, prior to issuance of the zoning development permit for the building, the applicant shall vacate the interior lot line between lots five and six. And that may even progress further into locating, into merging all of those into two lots instead of just five and six. Establish public utility easements pursuant to any IRE comments that were submitted, and pay all impact fees, which we've sort of mentioned already. So, in conclusion, staff does recommend approval. Finds compliance and conformance with conditional use permit standards and the site plan review standards. And that concludes my presentation. Mr. Chairman, are there any questions of staff?
Do we have any questions for either the applicant or staff?
I have an application. Laura, would you go back to this slide about the fourth one, I think, roughly?
Okay.
And Mr. Smith can probably answer this better than you. But, Mr. Smith, can you tell us roughly where the property line is on that lots five and six northwest view where the two automobiles are parked in the cul-de-sac? Do you see what I'm asking?
Maybe.
Well, sort of.
So, lot four ends kind of where this grading stops. So, lot five is up here, and lot six sits over here.
So, that cluster of trees there, that cluster of trees there will be gone, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we are proposing on the slope to plant new...
I just saw the nice group of trees and hate to see them go. Thank you.
Anybody else have questions of the applicant or staff?
A question about the sidewalk fees, or fees in lieu of sidewalk. Where does that money, additional monies will be for lots five and six because of the frontage on Highway 24? Is that correct?
Just lot six, I believe. Let me, let me, see that little corner right there? That's it. And that's lot six.
Yeah, well, I think in addition to that, not that we want to pay more fees, but the city will see this. So, lots, oh, no, that was probably, was, was...
We, we haven't received the fees for lots three and four and lot six.
So, you have not received those for three and four? Okay. So, there'll be fees in lieu for lots three and four at the time of building permit, as well as this 30 feet along Highway 24.
And could you educate us on what happens to those fees?
Those fees are deposited into the general fund.
No. They, they actually go into the streets fund for transportation for multimodal improvements. Pedestrian access is a multimodal transportation improvement. So, it goes into what's called the 410 fund. And then, they are programmed for high priority needs within the city.
So, they're not earmarked specifically for sidewalks in the future?
Not adjacent to this project.
Not adjacent to this, but they won't necessarily go towards sidewalks somewhere else in the city. It'll just go to transportation improvements.
No, sidewalks, they'll go toward the...
Specifically sidewalks.
Specifically sidewalks. But the prioritization throughout the city.
Thank you.
Jerry, do you have a question?
Yeah, just one quick one. The common area, I assume that will be built at the same time the building will be built. Generally, not five years later?
No, it'll be built with the second building.
If we don't have any more, we'll open up the hearing for public comment. Okay. Dave, anybody sign up? Pardon? Pardon? Come on up. Name, rank, show, your number?
Jeff Cahill, 187 Glendale Drive, about 200 feet across the street on the east side of the new facility. A number of years ago, and looking back at the calendar as you just had it broadcast a few minutes ago, it's been three years. And in that period of time, it seemed to have changed the regulations or the rulings or what they had put forth on development relative to the exhaust from the kitchen, which was at that time not a full commercial kitchen. And I voiced some concerns at that time because I moved up to this neck of the woods for respiration issues, which hell's been threatened with when I look back east on the eastern side of Pelbert Springs. And now, we're going to have a full commercial kitchen. That means we could have a deep vent fryer in there, if I'm not mistaken. They can address that. And I made the comment, at that time, Mr. LaBaron owned Denny's Restaurant, and we used to hike up through Sun Valley Morning Sun. Boy, that exhaust was really onerous. I mean, it really got to my lungs. But thankfully, I lived on the other side of elevation, and it wasn't a problem. But now, that whole thing is being brought over to our neck of the woods. So, I asked at that time if there was some sort of filtration system, which could be implemented voluntarily on their part, which could mitigate any of that kind of an exhaust system expulsion from the building. So, that's one question I had. And the second, recently got an email from one of our neighbors, and you probably all have gotten it, concerned about lighting, which basically is existing at this point. And I heard Mr. Smith mention just within the last half hour that there would be no freestanding lighting in the parking lot. The folks that live up north, I'm sorry, north of me, up the hill in elevation maybe 70 feet, get a good amount of light infiltration because their bedroom is on the street side, directly uphill from the new development. And I was wondering if there are any volunteer gestures on the part of the developers and property owners could be asked if they could do something to put a good shield or a hood around that so that we can help our neighbors be able to keep their windows open during the winter, I mean, summertime, and not have all that, that light...
I think you said full cutoff lighting.
And that's what I was going to ask. Could he describe that?
Sure. You want to, you want to swap places, or what do you want to do here?
So, full cutoff lighting is a shield where the light is all downshift. So, there's no light. So, to give you a good example, the lights along Highway 24, as you drive through town at night, have all that glare because they're sitting in a globe and the light just goes everywhere, versus the lights at Walmart in the parking lot. everywhere versus the lights at Walmart in the parking lot where they're shielded and the light just shines down and doesn't shine out.
Stops any glow in the sky?
Correct. No light up, no light to the side.
Right.
The light shines down.
I'm in the sign business and we do have a lot of lighting to illuminate signs at night, and we use white to reflect the light inside of the sign cabinet, distribute it much more effectively. And unfortunately, concrete is a light color. And so what's bouncing down from these shielded lights is bouncing back up the hill. So that's just something I want to offer to the science of this, all right?
Okay.
Thank you.
And would you address the issue on the, not you, sorry, thank you. Okay, on the filtration and the full commercial question, the question that he had about that?
Yeah, so the commercial kitchen is not anything we desire. It's the thing that's preventing our CO. So the commercial kitchen that's exhausted, it's been quite extensive and to build and expensive to build. But we are not going to have any commercial frying. There's not a deep fryer. It is an eight, 10 burner range, commercial range with, because we have a commercial range, we have to have the Ansel fire system as well as this exhaust and makeup area. So it's an extensive cost and quite a contraption, but we are not planning on doing any cooking that you wouldn't be doing in your home. It's just that we would be doing it for 20 people rather than five.
Okay.
And I will say, I'm not sure exactly what the lighting problem is. When we first received our back porch light, it was at an angle, so we had to order a new part so that it was full cutoff, straight down. So I don't know if that has anything to do with any of the issues, but there was an issue when we first installed the back porch light, the one that's facing south, and it is incorrect.
Thank you. Can I answer your question?
It's probably going to be as weird as you're going to get right now.
Okay, fair enough. Anybody else have any questions different than he asked? Come on up. Same, name, rank, cell, number?
My name is Phyllis Cahill. The building looks really nice and I'm glad that the plan is to have two buildings instead of three buildings. My concern is there were going to be big retaining walls and I guess, it's hard to tell, I guess they're going to be retaining walls, but smaller. If you could explain that some more because it's not evident from the photograph, but it's a pretty good slope. And there have been some really huge mud puddles in that area because of any erosion because of the rains and whatnot, it all comes down and it makes it quite a puddle over there. And also, how the walls, how the cliffs would be retained with the houses? And then a timeline?
Thank you. Whoever wants to.
So from a retaining wall, so from a retaining wall perspective, we've reduced the amount of retaining wall substantially. As I mentioned, we had huge retaining walls, and if we went back to Laura's, well, this is her presentation, I could show you where those retaining walls are. You know, there's some fill that's gone in here because there was a steep cut and they have brought in material and they're filling out this slope. When they come in and grade for this, there'll be a lot of material that'll need to be moved. So they're going to take some of that material and they're going to grade out the slope more and flatten it out. You know, it'll still be a slope, but it'll be, you know, more of a three-to-one, four-to-one type slope. So it'll be easier to plant and re-veg and those types of things and be gentler than what was out there just a few months ago. So they need some of that fill material to finish that out. And then through here, we'll also have a slope that'll come down. No retaining walls in this area. That'll be revegetated. We show some trees here, some clusters of trees that'll be put back. And then in a large tree here, there is a small retaining wall along this side that's about four or five feet tall. And then we do have some retaining walls around the back of the building, just very similar to the retaining walls we have around the back of this building. So there's already an existing retaining wall for this building that sits here, and then this retaining wall will actually be on top of that. So it'll be, this building will sit fairly high compared to this building, but it sits 30, 35 feet below this point. And of course, the houses, as you go further to the north, if north is up, I always get that messed up here at Woodland Park, but if you go further north, those houses are even higher up on the hill. So the top of this roof will be 50-plus feet below their finished floor elevation.
Another question she had was drainage.
So from a drainage perspective, you know, there's drainage that's coming to the site. Obviously, I'm not aware of the specific mud issues, but anytime you have development on a site, you're going to have runoff, especially when we have, you know, big events. One of the things that is required is an erosion control plan that has to meet the requirements of the federal government and the state, as well as the city of Woodland Park. Of course, the city references those requirements, silt fence, cleaning up mud, those types of things. As this all gets built out and revegetated, obviously, the earth will be stable like it was, and we won't see that kind of runoff with the sediment flow that you see during construction.
Eric, let me ask you a question. The picture you provided or you guys took is a big pond in the middle of that parking lot, okay? And that one that you use on your slides.
Oh, it's the other way. All right, let's see. End show.
You had it.
This one?
Yeah. Okay, notice the one? Okay. What I'm saying is, let's say we have a three or four inch range. Where's the water going?
Well, this is all going to be...
For the property.
Yeah, this is all going to be stabilized. So as that gets stabilized, of course, and they're required to reach 70% of stabilization to meet the requirements of their permit. So until they reach that, they're not off the hook, okay? So that's part of their stormwater management permit that gets filed with the state of Colorado. If they don't, if they don't meet that, you know, there's fines, there's, you know, all kinds of things that can occur from the city as well as from the state. So this flows down the street into culverts that take it underneath the highway and over to Fountain Creek. So that's where the drainage, that's where it's all the drainage.
So when it comes down to Glendale there and goes out to 24?
Right.
At that point, it exits and goes under the highway?
Correct. There's a culvert that goes underneath the highway that then goes to Fountain Creek.
Does that answer that for you? Okay.
Timeline.
Timeline.
Oh, timeline.
Yeah, exactly. We didn't get this project financed and completed in a timeframe that we wanted, so it's hard to predict what the timeframe is for full stabilization and occupancy of this first building, which will be required by any financial institution, me being one of those financial institutions, before we can finance the next one. We are anticipating and I believe there is demand in this area as well as all the way down through Manitou Springs, Old Colorado City, and South Colorado Springs, that we will draw votes to this area. So we think the demand is there, but it's very difficult to predict when that financing, you know, when we can get financing and can finance.
Could be a couple of years.
It could be a couple of years.
Brings up a question. I'm going to keep doing this to you, you guys interrupt me. I did this with Eric one other time. The parking lot, which is going to be part of the expansion, is that going to be seeded, something done meantime?
Yes, it's...
Before you get through with building one, so it looks attractive, it's going to take two and a half, three years to build the next one?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we want the site to be beautiful, because we are attracting people...
Sure.
...to this residence, and they want to have a beautiful residence. So we will be, the common area will most likely be taken care of prior to another building being built, just because we need to get that site looking better. It has been seeded.
Okay.
It's not, we just seeded it a week or so ago, so there's no growth yet, but it has been seeded.
Questions from your guys?
Just for clarification, I've got one question for you. As far as, it is not just for seniors, correct? It's just anybody that might need it, could be a 30-year-old person that needs to have assisted living?
Yeah, we are trying to create a homogenous community, a cohesive community, so we are
Anybody else? Anybody else from the audience? If not, we'll close the public hearing. No rebuttal. Commissioners, any final questions?
I'd just like clarification on... I'd like to have clarification in the conditions, that the vacation of the lot between two and three be included in that description? I think it was only addressing...
1A and three, no? Right. They numbered them.
Right.
And just to add to that, if we're going to add to it, then maybe why don't we provide clarification that the lot lines between four, five, and six will be vacated, and the lot lines between 1A and three will be vacated.
There you go.
And that meets the intent of the note that we have on the drawing for building two, and that addresses the lots 1A and three. And we're fine with that condition.
It does. And also, the easements on lots five and six will need to be vacated.
Yes.
But that can happen currently.
Yep.
Thank you. Ken, they good?
Yes.
Okay, guys, it's time for deliberations and any other questions among yourselves or with staff that you want to talk about? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve conditional use permit review for use, 1809090, J, dot three, going and so forth. They used to have a 50-bed building assisted living.
Do I have a second?
With the amendment?
Has the amendment. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Ken seconded it.
Thank you. DeVoe?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carrick?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Hartsfield?
Yes.
Henlund?
Yes.
And Schrader?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Goodbye.
Just visiting. Just visiting.
Three doors per hour.
Okay, very good. Are you going to have an open house for the other first building?
We certainly will have an open house for the first building. If you want to get a CO, we'll call you house. We're going to have a little pass. Yeah.
Are we through with this? You want to go to work session now? You got anything else on that?
Just a couple of announcements before we break up and go to our work session. We do have a meeting on September 13th and then also September 27th, so we'll keep you busy through the next month, and that's all that we have at this moment.
Anybody else have anything for good in the order? Anything else you want to talk about? If not, we'll look at a, no other reports? Okay, looking for a motion for adjournment?
We're not going to do the worksheets?
Oh, yeah, it's after we adjourn. We're going to go do that. Okay, you can't, no, we got to go down there. Adjourn to a work session, okay? We'll clarify that, Vicki.
I'm going to adjourn to a work session.
Okay. All us in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned to a work session in three minutes. We got it. It's potty break time.